Oh, that was fun. Those were funniest. All right, so we are now gone. We I see us up there on the TV screen. I believe we're now live. And so we're going to start this regularly scheduled meeting of the Yonath Zoning Board of Appeals this May twenty six. I have to read into the record a statement thanks to Governor Baker, so please let me do so. My name is Steve DeYoung and I chair this wonderful board. Fabulous co-members. We now convene the May twenty sixth meeting of this board as required by General Law Chapter thirty A and Sections eighteen through twenty five and pursuant to Chapter twenty of the Acts of twenty twenty one, an act relative to extending certain COVID nineteen measures adopted during the state of emergency. The public are able to attend this meeting either in person or via the alternative public access. That's available on our website, the link. And so we have had over the course of these meetings, several people that have done that. Members of the public may watch the meeting live on Channel eighteen or watch and or participate in the meeting hosted in Zoom. The meeting notice provides necessary instructions to join the meeting via Zoom. Please note that audio, video, and screen sharing functions will be disabled for all attendees. You may request to participate by raising the hand function on your computer. And we I see that we have Mr. Sean Igo, a regular member of this board, who is appearing remotely this evening, and welcome, Sean. I also want to welcome our newest board member, that of John Man Tony sitting next to me here. And he's a regular member just recently appointed, but he's going to be observing tonight instead of voting.
Right?
Correct.
All right, now, Mr. Igo, before we go any further, since it's the beginning of our agenda business, have you are you able to certify that you watched the entirety of the meeting on May twelve?
Yes.
All right. And so, as you know, we had a quorum, but we did not have a voting, enough voters. And so as a consequence, we opened the the meetings and each petitioner agreed to present their evidence and then to allow for somebody, either an alternate or you, to view it and certify that you viewed the tape in its entirety and are able to now vote on these matters. Is that you've done that, right?
I have.
All right, well, we can't give to you the certification form right now because but it will be emailed to you tomorrow morning, okay?
That's fine. I'll sign it and send it back.
So I'm sorry, this is going to be a little boring for everybody, but just bear with me. On May twelve, petition four nine five one that of New England's, I'm sorry, New Singular wireless PCS LLC, known as AT&amp;T. My Bell? Yeah, yeah. Care of Richard Adol Esquire Brown Rudnick presented a petition concerning the addition of equipment, cellular equipment at pole seventeen four in row near seventy five and seventy seven Mass Ave, West Yonath, Mass. I bet that was an exciting hearing. I remember the word of it. And you've reviewed that, have you, Mr. Igo?
I have, and I look forward to better coverage down in that area because I'm down in that area.
Yeah. Well, as you know from watching it, we did a roll call vote and three members that sat that evening all voted aye. So now, are you able to weigh in, having reviewed it in anticipation of your signing this certification? And tell us what your vote would be?
Yes, I am. And I'm an aye vote for that, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so that petition then therefore carries unanimously by roll call vote. We could ask the attorney to please send the draft decision. I'm sure. Is he here tonight? No, please let him earn the money. I don't I see I can't bill AT&amp;T, so I'm not going to draft it, and Sean can't either. So we go to petition four nine five two again, New England Cellular Wireless with Mike Dolan of Brown Rudnick presenting. Having presented it's concerning pole number nineteen and row near seven and eleven Grove Street. That's a zoning district R twenty five, and again, it was to seek a permit to allow a small cell wireless equipment to be installed at that location. Did you have the opportunity to review that, Mr. Igo?
I did, yes.
Okay, in anticipation of hearing what you have to say about it, we as the three members sitting all voted aye on that as well. And what would your vote be?
Aye.
All right, so that passes unanimously. And again, we're going to ask Mr. Dolan to write the decision up, okay? And then we come to Henry Cassidy and Gail Cassidy, trustees of the Henry E. Cassidy Junior Trust and the Gail Cassidy Trust of Eight Shed Row. That property being located at one sixty one Spring Lane, West Yonath, Massachusetts. That property being in an R twenty five zoning district in which the applicant sought a special permit under Bylaws Sections one oh four point three point two, subparagraph two, as allowed to add a second floor to existing one-story dwelling, a portion of which is to be located on the side setback. And that was presented by Mr. Todaf as my memory. Is that correct? And did you have a chance to review that, Mr. Igo?
I did.
And you you heard, I'm sure, that three of us voted aye on that petition. And what would your vote be?
Aye.
All right, so we'll ask Mr. Todaf as well to draft the decision. Henry S. Mark of forty seven McNamara Avenue came in on a petition for property located in the zoning district R forty. The applicant sought a special permit or any alternative of variance to allow for the installation of a deck sixteen by twenty foot in the front setback of a pre-existing non-conforming structure and in compliance with the Bylaw Section two oh three point five is how we sought the relief. So anybody at home is perhaps didn't see that meeting. I just want to let you know and anybody in our audience that this was a very uniquely shaped lot fronting on two roads. And so that difficulty made it certainly something that caused us to consider it as a special permit because it truly was the side yard and not the front yard. Mr. Igo and I are very strict about not wanting any front yard relief. But on the side yard, we considered one of the two roads to be the side and the other, which is where the front door faces, is McNamara Ave. So did you have a chance to watch that meeting, Mr. Igo?
I did, and I do agree that's a very unique lot over there at McNamara and Hastings, yes.
So on that, three of us voted in favor by voting aye on a roll call. Are you as well an aye or what is your vote?
I am an aye, yes, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so that passes again. That decision has a preliminary decision has been drafted and sent and that will now fill in the blanks and file that. However, before we leave this petition, there was there was a substitute request for relief, and that was a variance. The petitioner told us that he wanted he would be more than happy to have that withdrawn. If somebody that sat that evening, Mr. Martin, Mr. Frapery, or you, Mr. Igo, want to make a motion to allow the withdrawal of the variance request without prejudice, please so indicate.
So move. Go ahead.
We're gonna we're gonna credit Mr. Martin moving, I guess, because he was quicker to the draw. Would you like to second, Mr. Igo?
Sure.
Okay, there you go. And on that, let's do a roll call vote, please. Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Frapery?
Aye.
Mr. Igo?
Aye.
Mr. DeYoung's an aye that therefore carries that's allowed to be withdrawn without prejudice. Now we get to all of the work you people want us to do.
Mr. Chairman, if you could also vote or get Sean's vote on the rules and regulations?
Oh, yes, yeah, you saw the presentation we had for the change of the rules and regulations of the zoning Board of Appeals.
I did, and I did have some email correspondence with Kathy Williams as well.
Well, we did we vote on it that night?
We did.
Okay.
And.
Hey, she been able to respond to your satisfaction?
I just had one question, but it was it was cleared up and I actually had the question before I reviewed the hearing that she had with the board. So I am in favor of the rules.
You saw the rule that's going to make you the chairman for life?
Yeah.
All right, well.
I didn't see that in the fine print. Maybe I should review that.
And a very small footnote in the back. All right, we come now to, and you're an aye on that, right?
I am.
To approve them. All right, so that again carries unanimously. That's great. We had a fun meeting that week. John Patrick Python and Julia F. Loffman of Eight Thistle Lane, Lenmont, New York, are seeking relief with respect to property located at thirty one Griss Mill Lane, West Yonath. That property being in the zoning district R twenty five. Our applicant seeks a special permit pursuant to one oh four point three point two, subparagraph two of our zoning bylaws, to raise and replace a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling. And I see Mr. Singer at the table. Always wonderful to see you, Mr. Singer. Welcome. And you're presenting this evening for the petition.
I am.
Please go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Andrew Singer, attorney and dentist, here on behalf of the applicant, seeking this request to raise and replace the single-family dwelling at thirty one Griss Mill Lane. You have in front of you in your packets a summary of reasoning that I prepared, also a site plan with a revision date. We were originally going to be before you several months ago, but we are opening tonight for the first time, so we could go through conservation. This lot is very sensitive. So the approval, and I'll go through this in my summary, the approval from Conservation Commission, they requested that the building, the shape and the location be shifted a little bit. So from a zoning point of view, as I'll go through it, doesn't raise any red flags, but I just wanted you to have it's the plan with the last revision date of four nineteen twenty two. That is the plan that Conservation approves. This property is right, as you can see on the plan, right at the end of Griss Mill Lane at Mill Creek. Mill Creek's across Griss Mill Lane, and then the salt marsh wraps right around the property after the end of the road. So it's a very low site, and the house right now is we submitted a photograph of the existing dwelling. It's one story quite low. This proposal is to replace with a one and a half story elevated up out of the floodplain so that it will comply with the floodplain regulations, which is a significant environmental benefit. Also, if you look at the existing conditions plan or the photograph versus this, the driveway, which right now, if you're looking at the property with the water behind you, the driveway is on the left, so it's right on the marsh. It's like right on the marsh. This now the driveway and it's paved. Right now, the driveway is going to be turned into pervious and flipped to the other side of the property. So it's as far away from the marsh and the as you can get. So and you'll see there's a on the plan, there's a large area labeled proposed mitigation plantings. It's approximately sixteen hundred square feet of plantings. That is one of the this is Conservation approved and required that, you know, for trying to improve the wetland separation that where that mitigation is, is in part where the driveway is today. So that's all going to be reclaimed as the houses shifted a little bit. We're requesting a special permit for this raise and replace. You you look at whether or not it's going to cause any cause creator contributing nuisance, hazard, or congestion or any substantial harm to the neighborhood. We submit it's not going to be detrimental at all, let alone substantially detrimental, which is one of your standards, and that it won't cause any problems for a number of reasons. The use is going to stay the same as as a as a single-family dwelling. We are eliminating the pre-existing non-conforming rear setback. Right now, the house is sixteen and a half feet from the rear line. It will be proposed at twenty-three feet, so it'll become conforming. That nonconformity goes away. In addition, the pre-existing non-conforming right side setback, which is only six point four feet, it'll get a little bit better at seven point two feet, so it's not getting worse. It's getting a little better. That's the area where the Conservation Commission asked the owners to hug closer to that line because that's as far away from the wetland as you can get on the site. The left side setbacks and the front setback will remain conforming. Building coverage is going to remain conforming. We're twenty-two point three percent proposed, twenty-five percent allowed. The height of the the height of the house with the partial second story will also be conforming, just under thirty-five feet. And that's the house itself isn't that tall, but when you raise it up to beyond the up out of the floodplain, obviously, you're increasing the height. But it will be conforming nonetheless. As I mentioned, this will be a significant benefit because it will comply with all the floodplain regulations and eliminate the pre-existing non-conforming conditions. Conservation and you have a memo in your file, they have approved the project. Board of Health and you have memo in the file as well have also approved the project. There's not going to be any changes or impact to traffic flow or safety or any negative impacts to artificial light noise litter or or odor. The utilities are there and will remain. With, you know, we don't believe that there will be any anticipated nuisance, hazard, or congestion in the neighborhood, and this should be and will be a benefit all around. With that, if you have any questions, we happy to answer them, and we appreciate your time.
Well, thank you for the brevity of your presentation, Mr. Martin.
I think the presentation is excellent as well and explains everything. We have here the plans, all which look good. It's a lovely house. It's becoming more conforming in most respects and meeting the requests of the Conservation Commission, so I don't I don't have any questions and looks like a pretty good proposal to make.
Thank you, Mr. Frapery.
I agree with Mr. Martin, but I did have a couple of questions. I'm trying to differentiate between the plans that are dated January sixth.
Yep, correct.
And we saw the four nineteen as we walked in.
Yes.
It looks like you shortened up the side, and there's a deck on the side now. It's closest to the wetlands, I believe. So you pushed that back somewhat, is that?
Yeah, what they took, if you look at that older plan, they they the there was going to be a bump out on the front left of the house, which what the Conservation wanted, didn't want it there. And so the house got shifted a little bit and reshaped a little bit. If you look on the current plan, you see how there's a jog in the back? That jog was originally going to be more on the side, so it they things sort of shifted a little bit more towards the north, northwest, just to get it further away from the front of the property. Do you see the?
The setback goes from like fifteen four to seventeen something, is that right? And that's with no porch?
Correct.
With the porch is only like seven or eight feet now.
On the correct, the porch that you see there has been short, it's it's been brought back. Do you see the black dotted line, which is the flood zone AE eleven line? Originally, that porch was going to cross it, and if you look now, it's pulled behind it. So it's out of the AE zone.
So in other words, that's a smaller porch. I was talking about the side porch that exists today. That's basically pushing all the way back to the house rather than so I what is it that the south side, I guess?
Yes, yeah, let me pull up the existing conditions plan.
Looks like the new plan
Yes.
kind of corresponds more to the existing structure than the bump out that might have been on outside before. The porch was, is that correct?
Correct, yes. And also, if you look, if you look at the existing conditions, you see how that back deck or the porch there was sixteen and a half feet from the back? And that's been pulled out. It's now going to be twenty-three feet, so it's being pulled both away from the rear lot line and north from that left sideline. Okay, yes. And that's all where it's the lowest and the most sensitive for the weather.
Which is really good. Yeah, I agree with that. Now, you have added a patio and slab in the back?
Correct.
Does that slab, does that patio go all the way to the end of the house? Or in other words, in parallel with the side of the house? And is that still, it's a kind of a?
I yes, it does, because that line that you see that seems to go through the patio is actually the pipe for the septic thing. Yeah, so the patio is going to the edge of the house. That line is a pipe.
Okay. So is that corner of the patio, is that closer than the seven point two feet that the corner of that house is?
I will tell you that it won't be.
It looks like it might be a little bit.
Because of the angle there a little bit. What I would, yeah, I don't have the measurement for that, obviously. This is a reduced plan.
Patio is on structures anyway, so it wouldn't come under the setback.
It'll be just on the ground level.
And the total height today, if you go from ground level up to the top of the house, is what, not including the chimney?
Height right now is nineteen and a half feet.
And what will it be when?
Thirty-four point nine. In in parts, parts of the house is still a single story, but the tallest part of the house.
All right, that's all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Holman.
I don't have any questions.
Mr. Igo?
No questions, thank you.
You know, I read your your memorandum and thought your reasoning was sound and look, it's just wonderful to see those homes improving. And yet, it's an expensive thing to improve them because of the proximity to wetlands. So I think anybody that can pull it off as tastefully as you've done here is doing a pretty good job. It's a wonderful home that your people are suggesting to build. I wish them good luck in it. I have no questions. I do have a couple of things before we open it up to the public's comment on this. And that is petition four nine four one. This is a Board of Appeals transmission from Kelly Grant, who is our Conservation Administrator. She references the thirty one Griss Mill Wayne Lane property and indicates that at their three seventeen twenty two meeting, the Conservation Commission heard a notice of intent for the raise and replace of a single-family dwelling. The Commission voted to approve the project with conditions. The approved plan is site plan proposed dwelling prepared for John Patrick Python and Julia Loffman, thirty one Griss Mill Lane, Yonath, Mass. Stephanie Stequin is the physical is the professional engineer at Ryder and Wilcox with a plan revision, last plan revision date of three four twenty two. So that plan certainly needs to be referenced if you get an affirmative vote tonight in the decision that I look forward to you drafting. And along with it, clearly, I hope that anybody makes a motion this evening. It's going to be subject to the Conservation Commission conditions as well. Goes without saying, but.
If I can just, you mentioned the three four twenty two plan. Just wanted to, we have a later date on our plan because they updated the zoning table.
Well, this is, I mean, I can only read what's presented to me, so they perhaps you don't have CONCOM approval then yet.
No, we do. There was just a note, it was notes for you. You know, for your board. So the plan they approved for the footprint is on here, all good. The later date was just updating the zoning table for you, so they're both, they talk to each other.
Okay, well, it's May twenty six, so it's I think it's pretty right hard on the presses, so, you know. In any event, if CONCOM's satisfied and they're putting in their conditions, I feel like our environment is going to be well protected. They do an incredibly good job over at CONCOM. Does anybody in our audience care to speak in favor of this petition? If so, please come to this microphone. Let us know who you are and what your address is. Seeing none. Did you raise your hand back then? I don't have my glasses on, so I just thought I saw. Does anybody in our audience care to speak in opposition to this petition? If so, please come to the microphone. Let us know who you are and let's hear what you got to say. Seeing none, we now does anybody in the virtual audience care to speak in favor or in opposition to the plan? If so, please raise your hand so that you can be identified and invited in. Seeing none, we now close it to the public's input on this petition. And we open it up to board discussion and deliberations. Let's start with you, Mr. Igo. What are your thoughts?
I think it's a I think it's a beautiful proposed new dwelling. I think it's going to sit very nicely on the lot. I think it meets to your setbacks. I believe they're only looking for one one setback, aren't they, on a side setback that's seven feet off the boundary? Is that all they're looking for?
That's about it.
Yeah, I mean, I heard Dick's comments. I think I agree with, I think he kind of hit it on the nail on the head, so to speak. Again, I think it fits right in the neighborhood. I don't see it being any type of detriment to the neighborhood or surrounding area. So I'm fully supported, and I would recommend the board support it as well.
Thank you. Ms. Holman?
I am in agreement with Mr. Igo. I think it's well presented as well, and I I do think it will add to the neighborhood, and I support it.
Okay. Mr. Frapery?
I think it's a really nice plan. I think it's a great improvement, and the fact that they've done the setbacks on the side of the wetlands and improved all the setbacks, I think, is a great improvement. So it's a it's a nice, nice project.
And Mr. Martin?
I'd agree with what everybody else said. I think it's great. Great plan, a beautiful home. It'll be a attribute to the neighborhood and the town.
Well, I think we should still recite into our record the the requirements of spec grant of special permit, that it's not likely to cause any undue hazard nuisance or congestion. Nor is it likely, nor is it a detriment to the current or future character of the neighborhood or town. It's wonderful. And it looks like it's going to probably be assessed that something higher than it currently is. And I'm always happy to see the tiny Yonath get extra tax dollars, so. I'm going to speak in favor of it too, and somebody makes a vote. Anybody prepared to make a vote?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move petition number four nine four one as as requested, subject to any and all conservation restrictions and requirements.
Anybody prepared to make a second?
I'll second.
All right, so motion's been made by Mr. Martin to grant the grant the special permit subject to the conditions of the Conservation Commission as the sole condition. And seconded by Mr. Frapery. Does the board care to have any discussion on that before proceeding to a vote? Anybody that wants to, please feel free. All right, so then we're going to have to do a roll call vote. We'll start again with you, Mr. Igo.
Aye.
Ms. Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Frapery?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
I'm an aye that carries unanimously. You know the drill. I look forward to getting the proposed decision.
Well, someone, thank you very much for your time.
It's always good to see you. We got to go to a baseball game like the old days, huh? All right. We come to that of a petition four nine four five, which is a matter continued from three twenty four twenty two. It's the Cape Cod Hospital in Winterberry Solar LLC, which is wholly owned by Next Grid Incorporated. The property location is four thirty, thirty-four, and forty Bayview Street, West Yonath. That property is NAB one and R twenty five zoning district. The applicant seeks to modify an existing special permit in order to construct carports for canopy-mounted solar panels over an existing Cape Cod Hospital parking lot along with three ground-mounted equipment pads and utility poles. Good evening, Ms. Campus. How are you this evening?
Good morning, thanks. How are you?
It's always just wonderful to see you come and join us, like Mr. Singer. I'm delighted because you'll draft the decision if it's favorable, right?
Absolutely.
At least the draft of the draft decision. All right, I may, you know, change it from a little bit. Why don't you go right ahead and tell us who you are for the public at home and also what your petition is about?
Great, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of the board. For the record, my name is Jeanne Campus. I'm an attorney at Nutter, McLennan &amp; Fish. With me here this evening is my colleague, attorney at Liza Cox, also at Nutter. We also have Michael Boxstein, who's VP of Facilities Management from Cape Cod Hospital here. And virtually, I believe, we have Daniel Cerber, Director of Land Development for Next Grid.
Let's stop right there. Do we have that individual? Why don't we invite them in then? You're going to ask them to, all right, why don't we invite them in so they can chime in if necessary?
Perfect, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Feel free, they're they're being, yeah.
There might also be Brian Yergation from BSC Group is our project engineer. He's on, is he on? No, okay. We we are, can you hear me? Okay. We are here before you this evening on Cape Cod Hospitals and Winterberry Solar LLC's application. It's really to modify an existing special permit for this property that deals with the that dealt with the parking, a parking expansion back in twenty seventeen. We seek to modify two conditions of that special permit. We do propose a series of solar canopies over Cape Cod Hospitals' existing employee parking lot on the Bayview Street properties. And we were first here in late March. And at that point, you know, the health department hadn't really had a chance to review the project in detail and had some questions and and had some questions and concerns that we needed to address. And likewise, the fire department also had some questions that we wanted to address. So in the past two months, we've worked very hard with those two departments. We've met on site with them both. And, you know, we feel that we have responded to all of their questions and all of their concerns. I hope you all have received updated comments from both the fire department and health department.
We do.
In short, what we did is we revised the plans slightly to include a fire hydrant on site. If you look at the revised plans, it's just to be located just left of canopy number nine. The stand pipe as well, and that was in response to the fire department's concerns as well as the health department. And we've also included protective bollards around the equipment storage areas, those three structures on that, on the left, left side of the property. We've worked very hard with Carl Lawson. I think we all have a better understanding of the materials at issue here. And I'm very pleased that we've, we've come to a point where both the fire and health departments seem comfortable with this use and believe that it does, it, it does comply with all the Board of Health regulations. Lastly, there were a few questions at the, at the last hearing regarding the proposed use and structures under the Dover Amendment and the big to solar. And so we also submitted a detailed memorandum last week addressing those questions. We're happy to answer any questions you may have about that or otherwise. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Boxstein, who's going to make a few comments.
You know, everybody on this board sits and panics. Am I going to be the first one called upon by Deion? So we're going to start with Mr. Frapery because I know.
Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. You, I thought you were done with the presentation. I'm so, so, no, go ahead. I thought you were done.
All right, hi. Hi, thank you. I'm Mike Foxstein, Vice President, Cape Cod Hospital and Cape Cod Healthcare. I work across the system. And I just had a few comments. We had the meeting in, in March, late March. I kind of sat back and listened to the comments from the attorneys and from the, from the board. Thank you for hearing the case. And I, I did realize with, with, with our staff here that we really need to spend more time with due diligence on the site with these various departments, with the Board of Health, with Carl, and with the lieutenants and the fire protection component of the fire department, which we work with for decades at the hospital. So when I walked away, I wanted to make sure that the health of our community in our hospital was no jeopardy by putting solar canopies at her, at her site. And I, and I did mention that to the board. That was, that was my, my, my fadeaway comment to the board was I want to make sure that, that things were right on site. So that's why we spent a lot of time and due diligence with Carl and with the fire department. There's a couple of things, I made a few notes because I was thinking about this. I was participating in a little group trying to address the climate change through decarbonizing, decarbonization of healthcare. Healthcare makes up ten to fifteen percent of all energy consumed in the United States. So there's a, there's a group, it's called Healthcare Without Harm. It's actually made up of twenty-three thousand hospitals across forty-three countries. And as a, all rowing together, this group, we're doing our part in creating a solution for reducing energy use across the planet. And our little project, our little canopy project, along with other efforts that we're working on, as you may know, we're going to be work, we are working on a project, large project at the hospital to get approval for in addition to the hospital. And a lot of that also includes EV charging stations, mechanical lighting improvements at the hospital, which consume a tremendous amount of energy. Part of this is improving those. Ride, ride sharing components and everything we also can do to improve a local solution and a global solution. So everything that we can do to improve these components of our community we're addressing, and this is just a piece of that. And from the hospital's perspective, this is a wonderful, wonderful way to participate and more of a, a global look at how we're going to improve resiliency of our planet. And I don't say that like, like a big picture comment, like, oh, this is what we're going to do. But this is our little piece right here in Cape Cod that we're going to participate in.
Thank you very much. Is anybody else going to speak to the petition?
No, but we are happy to answer any questions you have.
We'll start with Mr. Frapery.
Thank you. First of all, I just like to know, I'm very supportive of solar in general, so I, I appreciate what you're doing. But if you could do me a favor, I'm not a lawyer. If you could just run through for me, in summary, what is the Dover Amendment? How does it fit and specifically touch on structures and how structures fit in this versus, versus what our bylaws outline?
Sure, so the Dover Amendment, the state statute, and it classifies a number of uses as exempt uses, for say. It includes educational, agricultural, religious, and it also has a provision related to solar. Each of the provisions relating to these separate uses is somewhat different. And as it relates to solar, the Dover Amendment, and I think it's, I did quote it in our memorandum, but it says that no zoning bylaw shall prohibit or unreasonably regulate the installation of solar energy systems or the building of structures that facilitate the collection of solar energy, except where necessary to protect the public health, safety or welfare. And to be quite honest with you, there's not a whole lot of appellate case law interpreting this decision. But the lower courts have come out pretty clearly in favor of solar. And so unless a local board can identify a threat to the public health, safety or welfare, solar is generally an as-of-right use. Some towns have bylaws allowing it in some districts and disallowing it in other districts. The town of Yarmouth doesn't regulate it at all. There's nothing in your bylaw saying it's allowed here, but not here or anything. So in that, in that situation, there's case law that very clearly says you default to the Dover Amendment, and it's, it's an allowed use. And there is case law on that. It's a case called Waller. I cited it in the memorandum, but basically in those circumstances where the bylaw does not regulate it or as in Yarmouth, a lot of towns will say, any use that's not expressly allowed is prohibited. So it's kind of this blanket prohibition because, just because it's not identified as a use in your bylaw. That's where the Dover Amendment comes in, and it is an allowed use.
Can you specifically speak to the, the structures themselves? Because solar, I understand, and ground-mounted panels, but canopies are a little different. So can you speak to the canopies and why the, why you feel that that's a similarly allowed structure?
Sure. So with respect to solar again, and this isn't under all, all uses protected by the Dover Amendment. But with respect to solar, the Dover Amendment very clearly protects not just the use itself, but any structures that help facilitate the collection of solar. And so here, really, the only reason we are proposing these structures over this parking lot is to mount the solar panels on to facilitate the collection of solar energy. It's not to provide shelter for vehicles. It's not for any other purpose, but to provide solar. And without them, we wouldn't have a solar use on the site. So in that situation, this situation, where they are absolutely necessary for the solar project, they are protected under the Dover Amendment because they are structures that facilitate the collection of solar energy.
Okay, thank you. And just a couple of things. As far as all that, I know that the park, parking today has a variety of vegetation, trees planted in different areas. And it looked like, I think on the map, that you're planning on keeping a few of those trees, I think, over some of the solar arrays? And I just was curious how that's going to work?
Yes. Mr. Martin, I believe you're on the design review committee, right? We went to design review committee. And we, we did work very hard, we worked with an arborist actually, to identify species of trees and so forth that would thrive under these solar canopies and with the solar canopy. So we.
So it's under the canopies, not above?
Yes, that's correct. And, and so some, some of the trees you'll see on the plan, we did have to relocate. But we, we didn't remove any, we're not removing any trees.
Okay, and I saw some setbacks are taken care of. I think those are all my questions. Thank you.
Mr. Martin?
I don't really have any questions. I think they've taken care of any I might have had. And back to the trees, I guess. Is there any, any method of watering those now? There's no irrigation, right?
I'm sorry, I missed the last.
No irrigation, right?
I don't believe, I don't believe so, no.
Any effort going to be made to somehow water the trees if we have dry spell?
Can you hear me? This is Daniel. I'm one of the applicants. I, I can step in for that. We do have, our operations and maintenance crew do handle landscaping duties. And when we plant new trees, we generally have them taken care of if that is remote watering for the first two years of life. And we feel that that's generally enough time to, to stabilize the tree so that it'll be successful on its own. And these will be open air, so rain will be free to fall on, onto the trees, of course.
Okay, thank you. I'm, I'm good for now.
Thank you, Ms. Holman.
I don't have any questions. I think you've answered everything. I was here at the first meeting, and you've come back with more information based on the concerns that we had then. So it feels like it's our presentation.
Mr. Iago?
Yes, thank you. So counsel, you say that the Dover Amendment prohibits us from regulating the structures that these solar panels are going to sit on. Is that your representation?
Yes, the Dover Amendment would prohibit you from regulating or prohibit, prohibiting these structures unless there is a threat to the public health, safety or welfare, which I would submit there is none here.
Okay, so you came in with a proposition and you wanted to put these on top of a six-story parking garage instead of on these solar canopies that are carports. Your position is the Dover Amendment will protect you, and you'd be able to construct that. Is that your representation?
Well, I, I don't know what the height, how the height would play into that, but.
Well, let's say you're staying under the thirty-five feet. Let's say it's three and a half story garage. It's thirty-four feet high, and you're going to put solar panels on top of it. You're representing to this board that we could not stop you from doing that. Is that correct?
I don't think there's any provision in your bylaw that authorizes you to prevent us from doing that, correct?
Are you telling me that the Dover Amendment says that?
Yes, because, because your bylaw does not regulate solar, the Dover Amendment would require, would require you to allow it unless, again, there's a threat to the public health, safety or welfare.
And so not only would you be able to do that, but so would Stop &amp; Shop, Shaw's, the Cape Cod Mall, any commercial parking lot on Cape Cod would be able to build these canopies, have them serve as carports for their customers, and you could build solar panels on top of them. And no town could regulate it unless it was in their bylaw.
No, that's not the case. It has to fit into the categories of what Dover Amendment spoke to, right?
Well, I'm asking her, Steve.
Well, I, I think, again, solar, the use itself is a protected use under the Dover Amendment, as are the structures that are required for the facilitation of solar energy. You know, it's, there's a case pending before the SJC currently that's addressing the issue of whether it's reasonable or not to allow solar in some zoning districts, but prohibit it in others. And that's what's before the SJC. You don't even have that in Yarmouth, though, because your bylaw is absolutely silent as to solar. And so in this situation, yes, I think the Dover Amendment comes into play to prohibit you from, from disallowing solar unless there is a, a threat to public health, safety or, or the general welfare.
So it's, so while it's not listed in our bylaw, you would say it's an allowed use?
No, it's not, it's not in your, it's not allowed in your bylaw.
I asked you a question. You're saying we don't, we don't prohibit it in our bylaw, or we don't regulate it, so it's an allowed use?
It is an exempt use, I would say, under the Dover.
Okay. Well, I disagree with that. Did you have a conversation with our building commissioner prior about these structures?
I did, yes.
What did he tell you about these structures? Did he say that we could regulate those structures?
Well, he happens to be here. Would you like me to invite him to the meeting?
I might in a minute. I didn't realize he was there.
Yeah.
Margaret, I have your email if you, if you're. So, yeah, we did meet with, with your building commissioner. And we followed up in writing. And we, we agree, or Mr. Grills agreed that there is a primary structure on this lot located in the northwest corner of the lot, owned by Cape Cod Hospital, and that the solar canopies, the structures themselves are allowed accessory structures. So it was.
I don't think that was my question, counsel. My question was, did you and he have a conversation about our ability to regulate the structures that solar panels sit on?
Hypothetically, no, we talked about this particular matter, and he agreed with me that zoning relief is not necessary for these particular structures.
Then why are you here?
Because there's an existing special permit for this property, and it contains two conditions. And the first one recites the plans from twenty seventeen, and we need to modify that to reflect these plans to show the solar. And the third condition of that special permit provided that there are no hazardous materials to be on site. And we would like to modify that condition to, to narrow it down to say there will be no hazardous materials on the portion of the site located within the APD because, because all of our hazardous materials are located outside the APD.
Okay, okay. Well, that, that's, I, I'm not quite sure where you're going with that because that has nothing to do with what we're talking about, but I appreciate you going to get that. In your memo, again, you underline the building of structures that facilitate the collection of solar. The Dover Amendment protects not only the proposed solar use, but also the building of structures that facilitate the collection of solar energy. You underlined that.
I did.
Are you saying that's in the Dover Amendment?
I am.
Okay, okay. So we have no regulation over the, these structures at all?
They're, they're exempt under the Dover Amendment.
Well, I disagree with that. Mr. Chairman, you were not present at the last hearing.
Yes, nor can I certify that I have reviewed the tape on this.
No, that's, that's fine. You, you, okay. Are you able to sit for this hearing then?
No. I can sit through the hearing. I just can't vote on it.
Okay.
Somebody's got a present that's here.
On the last, and, and I'm happy to have the building commissioner, and I'm happy that he's here to comment on this. But my opinion is what they're proposing to build is a parking garage. They're going to put solar panels on top of it. That's how I view the structure. And so we had this discussion at length last time. Counsel and I went back and forth on it. But we can talk about that later. So now you've kind of shifted because we didn't talk about the, so your position now, counsel, is, is that these structures, if they are structures, are accessory to a building that happens to be on the property?
That's not my particular position. I think you could look at it that way.
Isn't that in your memorandum?
That's, it's kind of a secondary way to look at things. My, my position very clearly is that regardless of whether you look at these as accessory structures or primary structures, it doesn't matter. They are structures that facilitate the collection of solar energy, and therefore they are exempt just as the use is under the Dover Amendment.
Okay. Well, as, just so we're clear, and I think you stated this in the last hearing, you would not be willing to substitute those solar panels on conventional stanchions, stanchions that they sit on and eliminate your parking lot, correct?
No, I, I, again, I think parking lots are kind of universally viewed as a great location for solar canopies. You're not cutting down any trees. You're not, you know, you're, you're using a property for a dual use. And so it's kind of a win-win for solar, and I, the Cape Cod Commission is.
The Cape Cod Commission, I read that. Are you suggesting that they're supporting these solar canopies universally across Cape Cod and any commercial parking lot?
No, all I'm saying is that their general position is that they support the use of solar on a parking lot. You have to review each case, you know, on its own. But generally speaking, they are in favor of installing solar canopies over existing parking areas in excess of 10,000 square feet.
In excess of 10,000 square feet, okay. I hadn't seen that. Do you have any, do you have any writings to support that? Not that it matters to us, so that's irrelevant. Strike that.
Okay.
I don't have any more questions right now. I would make a comment that I believe that what they're asking us to do is to allow them to build a commercial parking garage here. It's not an allowed use in our bylaw. So I think the solar panels are really just accessory to what they actually want to build. They want to talk about solar panels, we can talk about that. But my objection is with the structures that they want to use to support them, they're clearly to provide parking spaces that have covers on them. In my definition, that's a parking garage, but I will stop there, Mr. Chairman, for now. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just gonna just comment, and again, I'm not going to be voting this evening. I apologize for that, but I'm not. But when I read your particularly identified portion of the Dover, the case of Dover, Attorney General versus Dover, this is right out of the cases, this is on page five, your top paragraph, where it reads prohibit or unreasonably regulate. Is that language right out of? Okay, so I don't know why every bylaw that we pass or town meeting passes goes to the AG's office to determine if it's unreasonable. So we can still regulate these things as if and when they ever do under this. It's not a blanket approval. It says very clearly, we can't unreasonably regulate, but every zoning bylaw is approved by the AG before it becomes law. So I don't think it's an issue. The problem is we don't have anything. Their laws...
My understanding is if it's not in the bylaw, it's prohibited.
I see you standing at the... May I point to Mr. Grilles and ask him to go ahead with whatever he wants to say? John?
Yeah, yes, please.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board...
For everybody...
Oh, I'm Mark Grills, Town Yarmouth Building Commissioner. I'm sure almost all of you know me. The Dover amendment references unreasonably regulate, so you can't prohibit the solar use and you cannot unreasonably regulate the parking street. You can't unreasonably regulate the structures that the solar sits on. The height limitations, the setback limitations, the lot coverage limitations, those all apply. They're in the bylaw. I've talked this through with town council. So you can't cover your entire lot with a solar array. You can't put your solar array right up against the property line. You can't have your solar array 75 feet in the air, all to Mr. Igo's point. So yes, the bylaw does reference structures, but not the use of solar. The use of solar cannot be prohibited, so therefore what's the point of it being referenced in our zoning bylaw? Where wind is referenced, cell power is referenced, you know, things of that nature. But that's how it was explained to me by town council and I thought that I would forward that information to you guys.
Well, if town council is going to be quoted, they probably ought to be here, but before you leave, let me ask you a question. Is there any prohibition from creating a canopy with no solar panel on top of it?
We would view that as a structure and we would have to meet the requirements of the zoning bylaw.
Sure. All that side setback, height, all of that, right?
Correct.
And so this is the canopy upon which the solar panels.
Correct.
All right. I have nothing else. I'm sorry I even chimed in, but I just wanted to speak to Mr. Igo's.
Could I ask the commissioner a question? Could I ask the commissioner a question before he leaves?
Go on.
Mark?
Please.
There were no solar panels on these canopies and they were sitting as carports with just conventional roofs on them and they wanted to build 200 of them in that parking lot. Would you consider that a commercial parking garage?
I don't know. That's, I don't know what the definition of a commercial parking garage is, but I don't know if I would or not. I'd have to see a plan.
Would they be allowed to build that?
In this particular instance, there was, there's been relief in the past to allow the park in there in the first place and I, it depends. Would they be allowed? Yes, because they're structures, just like a carport on a person's, at a person's residence. You could have, you could have a carport at a person's residence, provided it meets the setback requirements, the height limitations, the lot coverage requirements. So yeah, possibly.
Would we allow, how about the number of them? Don't we allow, regulate the number of carports or garages?
The number of garage, parking of garaged vehicles is how the bylaw refers to it and garage vehicles is, it maxes out at three on residential lots.
Okay. Question or not?
Okay. Were you done? John?
Just that one other question. We do not have, commercial parking garages allowed in the bylaw?
Commercial parking lots are not, but the bylaw doesn't reference commercial parking garages. Those are still structures. So that would be a type of commercial parking lot, I would assume. That would be another one I'd have to look at.
Okay. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Does anybody on the board have questions of our building commissioner while he's there at the lecton? Seeing none. You can sit down. Feel like I'm in school, a school teacher. Go sit down. All right, so we have a wonderful presentation, but there are a couple of things that also have to be identified. What? Anybody else have questions? Sorry. Can I neglect to call on you? Sorry. Thank you, Jay. Okay. The memorandum of the Board of Health has been referenced. Seeing it only goes through March 23, is that right? Is that the last time the Board of Health weighed in on?
No, they weighed in on Tuesday.
And I can't find the, do you have it there? And I might take it and just read from it. I'll return it to you. I will not accept this as something we are filing tonight. I just want to...
Yeah, May 17.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
All right, so I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Instead of reading this in its totality, I'm going to just reference it in our record. May 17 of 2022, Akali Lawson, who we all know and really appreciate the work he does for this town, who is also a hazardous waste inspector, provided a, we'll start with the summary. Based on the information received thus far, it appears NextGrid will be able to comply with all aspects of Town of Yarmouth Board of Health regulations, handling and storage of toxic or hazardous materials with additional safeguards beyond the strict scope of the regulation. He then summarizes it to say, in reiteration of the summary presented at the beginning of this memorandum and based on the information received thus far, it appears NextGrid will be able to comply with all aspects of the Town of Yarmouth Board of Health regulation, handling the storage of toxic and hazardous materials with additional safeguards beyond the strict scope of the regulation, regulation are also included. So he, as you know, lists several conditions or requirements that the Board of Health you know, weighed in on and presented and that is, thank you. Those conditions would, if there's going to be a motion made this evening, those conditions are clearly going to be incorporated into any decision.
Oh, sorry. I don't want to cut you off.
No, it's okay. I interrupted you earlier.
No, I was just going to ask, since Mr. Grills has spoken with town council about this and I wonder if it would be helpful to have town council weigh in on some of these Dover amendment issues to the extent there's any questions.
You know, town council gets paid, you know, and a town council provides legal advice to the town. And I'm not in any position to say that should be waived. You know, it's confidential information between council and client. We've run into this before and specifically we have not accepted memorandum from town council on legal issues because of that very reason. I certainly have no authority to bind this town to pay money to town council for their legal opinion. So that would have to go through the one board that does have that and that would be the Board of Select Persons or the town administrator, perhaps he is allowed. I don't know the nature of his limitations and like. But again, we just recently went through this and town council, they gave us a memorandum, but it was not open for public viewing and it was specifically said, we not going to be in the business of waiving privilege.
No, no, I think just for, I'm talking about more in terms of for your all benefit to the extent there's any questions about how the Dover amendment does apply here to the structures and the use. It doesn't have to be open for the public, of course, but just to have town council weigh in for your benefit.
Well, I mean, I need town council to weigh in.
Go ahead.
I don't think I need town council to weigh in.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's really something that the board should be calling upon, not the petition. We just ran into this very recently and I think we have to stay consistent because that case is under appeal and I know we're right. Okay, and so let's stay consistent as we try to with all of our decisions. There is another thing that I want to read into the record and then we'll open it up to board discussion and deliberation. I mean, the public's input rather. Petition 4945 out of Cape Cod Hospital, 430, 34 and 40 Bayview Street, West Yarmouth, Nassau, at their 317 2020 meeting, the Conservation Commission heard a request for determination of applicability for the proposed installation of an elevated solar array above an existing paved parking lot within the buffer zone to a bordering vegetated wetland. The commission issued determination approving the proposed work on the basis that it lies partially within an area subject to protection, but will not alter a wetland resource area. The approved plan is entitled Cape Cod Hospital Photovoltaic I always screw that, Photovoltaic System for Bayview Street, West Yarmouth Site Plan, Brian. That you, Brian? Who's Brian? Is Brian here tonight? Jurgitan? I hope I'm not. Of the BCS group and that plan is dated December 14, 2021. I think those are the only thing. Oh, fire outward did weigh in. Excuse me, there is a fire memo. And I can't tell which is the most recent because it's undated. They're all undated. So it looks like it's this, after meeting with Cape Cod Hospital project managers, they have addressed fire department concerns, comments, adding proposed solar canopies for the Cape Cod Hospital employee parking lot located at 4 Bayview Street. Fire department access will be maintained in relation to the solar canopies. A hydrant will be located within 100 feet of the energy storage system and NextGrid will provide training for fire department personnel on fire suppression systems relating to the storage unit. Bolids will provide, will, I'm reading it, you know, I didn't draft this, okay. A bolid will provide, I guess it was intended to protect, or will be provided to protect the system from damage from vehicles on the parking lot. Separate permits may be required for energy storage systems. They go through site plan review, as you've indicated, and site plan review did weigh in, but I don't think it's necessary that we go through all of its comments. Now, does any member of the board have any questions of the petition as representatives before I open it up to the public's input? Hearing none. Is anybody in our public care to speak in favor of this petition? If so, please come to the lectern. Tell us who you are and where you live. Seeing none. Does anybody in our audience care to speak in opposition to this petition? If so, please come to the microphone. Tell us who you are and what you have to say. Seeing none. Does anybody in our virtual audience care to weigh in either in favor or against this petition? If so, please raise your electronic hand and let our wonderful, wonderful new coworker identify you. Please go right ahead. Anybody there? And so we now find that we are closing it to the public's input on the petition, open it up to board discussion, deliberation, and I'll now step back. So somebody begin it. You begin it, Mr. Igo.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I want to say at the outset that I certainly have no problem with solar power. I think we need all sorts of alternative energy to make ourselves more energy independent. As anybody who watches the news these days, the price of gas realizes that we got to do something. Not to make this a political discussion. The issue that I have regarding the petition this evening is that of the structures that are going to be used to support these solar panels. I think the structures themselves are unreasonable. I think they have an alternative, which would be to lower them and put them on what they are normally supported by a much lower structures. What they are proposing here is twofold. They are proposing to put solar arrays up, but they're also supporting, also proposing to use this as they determine, as they've said, as a carport. A carport to me, that's going to house 150 cars with a structure and cover is a commercial parking lot. I don't find anywhere in the bylaw that that is allowed. My understanding, if it's not listed in the bylaw, it's not an allowed use.
For a second, just to ask you a question. What about Stop and Shop parking lot? Is that a commercial parking lot?
That is a commercial parking lot.
Well, but it's not regulated by us, is it?
Well, I think if Stop and Shop came to us and said they wanted to put all their cars, if they wanted to build a commercial parking lot three stories high there, that would be a structure, just like this is a structure. I think we'd have a problem with that or we at least want to talk to them about it. And I think if anything, I don't believe the petitioner is in front of us with the proper form of relief. I don't think this is a modification of an existing special permit. I think what they're asking for, they should be asking for a variance. I discussed that last time with counsel. It's on the record. They believe that they can come in to modify this. I clearly find that these structures represent a commercial parking lot. They have an alternative. They don't want to use the alternative I've suggested because they don't want to give up their parking lot. They want to have both. They do a but, a residential neighborhood. I would also find that these structures, as proposed, are substantially detrimental to the neighborhood that they surround in a but. We talked to them when the hospital originally came in and wanted to put this parking lot. First they came in and they said, oh, this is just for the doctors. This is for the staff. Then all of a sudden it grew. It keeps growing. We try to be reasonable and accommodating to the hospital. Now they've come in and I, in my opinion, they've asked for something that's unreasonable. So I don't think the Dover amendment protects them from us regulating the structures that these solar panels sit on. I don't think that's a proper reading. Whether you underline it or not, I don't think it makes it so. So I cannot support this. Again, I think they need a variance for what they want to do. If they want to come back and ask to put solar panels in place of the parking lot, that would be a different discussion. But I believe they're not asking for the proper relief. They need a variance. And I believe as proposed, this is an unreasonable request and that they have another alternative for these solar panels, except these 150 carports that they propose. and that they have another alternative for these solar panels, except these 150 carports that they propose. I would also suggest to this board that if we allow this tonight, there's nothing to stop anybody else from any other parking lot in town from coming in and doing the same thing. Because as Judge Nickerson said on a case that we lost many years ago, you can't say yes to one guy and no to somebody else. It doesn't work that way. Everybody's got to be treated fairly. So I would ask the board to consider that as well. Is that what we want to do is see these at the Cape Cod mall, to see them at Stop and Shop? To see them in all our hotels? Where you could have them all over the place? What is reasonable regulation? I believe that we have the right to reasonably regulate this, and I think that we can do that tonight. So I would urge the board to reject this petition, vote against it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Before you leave there your comments, was it your suggestion that previously you had raised at the March 24 meeting that you thought it was the right relief would be by variance?
I do. I believe those structures require a variance.
Okay.
I don't believe they can, at least I do.
Since we've heard Mr. Igo chime in first, and we know that you're going to lose the vote.
Well, I would say that the structures do satisfy all dimensional requirements set forth in your bylaw. We comply with coverage, we comply with height, we comply with setbacks. So, so yes, you can impose those regulations and we are abiding by those regulations. I think what Mr. Igo is trying to do is to prohibit the structures altogether, which I would I would say is an unreasonable regulation on solar.
Well, he suggested apparently a different course for you to take in the presentation. And I agree that I don't know, should it be a special permit of variance or not? But he suggested a different course because, you know, if there's a vote tonight, you're going to lose the vote. And so then your next, your next is to go to an appeals court or land court. And, you know, is that the way you want to do it or do you want to try to come back in on a variance request? Doesn't mean it's going to change anything, but I know that I'll be able to vote that night.
I mean, if we could continue this matter. I think that would.
I think I've heard Mr. Igo say he's, what would be the reason for the continuance? So that I could review it? Yeah, no, I don't think that's a reasonable request.
Mr. Chairman, I would also ask that the board review our regulations. We've dealt with this in the past when people ask continuances and continuances until they get the right board. We need a vote by the board for them to continue this hearing. I would suggest that if we have that vote, that the board reject that.
Well, I just said my piece on that. If it's to try to get me to go, I'm not going to do that. Okay, I just won't watch the video. I don't think it's the right thing to do to continue these hearings for that reason.
Question and comment?
Sure.
So first of all, I just wanted to make a comment. So I don't agree with Mr. Igor that these are, this is a carport recommendation. I think these are structures that are meant specifically for solar and is providing dual use. But I do understand the concern about having something like this that isn't regulated peripherate around the town. So I am concerned about that. But I do have a question, Sean. What under, what variance are you looking for? They would be looking for a variance in what regard?
But we don't need to discuss that now. That relief isn't before us.
All right.
The request for that relief isn't before us and it shouldn't.
Trying to understand.
Presented.
Anyway, that's my comment.
Mr. Chairman, I might like to comment too. Just to say that I don't necessarily, I agree with some of what Mr. Igo is saying, but not all. Yeah, I don't think you'll see this everywhere. Let's say we want to take the Stop and Shop complex, for instance. I mean, they already have a huge building there, a plaza there that if I'm not mistaken, probably is just about 25% of the lot coverage for the building. So they wouldn't have any more room to build any structures for solar panels. Here, this lot is mostly empty, except for one very small building. The parking is already there. I consider these carports, I certainly don't consider them a garage. A garage would be built from scratch on on raw land and, you know, be some number of levels and be enclosed more or less as opposed to the open. I mean, these carports are even open to allow trees and sections that are not structures. This site's meeting the less than 25% coverage with all these structures added. It's meeting all the setbacks and other requirements of the bylaw that other sites probably could not meet because they'd have a big building on them. They can cover the building with solar panels, but so I wouldn't agree with much of what was said. I think this is a great, as Mr. Frappery says, a dual use where the parking is already there anyways. I can see you not wanting to get rid of that parking, that any of that parking to put mounted solar panels on the ground because you need that. And that's why that parking lot has grown and the hospital has grown. And I know you've got a huge number of employees and doctors and so forth that are there. I know the public does not park in that lot. But I've also seen that lot pretty much filled. And so I know you can't really give up parking. So based on that, I think it's a it meets all the building requirements in terms of coverage and so forth. I would call them open carports. I would not call it a parking garage by any means. Yes, we may need to, the planning board may need to come up with some bylaws that might start to address this a little bit better. But because it is silent and this does come under the effect of the Dover bylaw, I personally think it's a good, good mixed use proposal that accomplishes two different things on what's already an existing parking lot.
Thank you. Ms. Omar, did you want to weigh in on anything that you just heard or anything that you might just like to weigh in on?
I agree with Mr. Martin and Mr. Frappery. I don't believe it's a parking garage. I believe it's trying to utilize something that already exists and taking advantage of it for a benefit. I think it makes sense. I think it's smart, especially now in 2022, we need other resources for energy. And yes, other people are going to try to do it because it's necessary. The parking lot's necessary. It's been there now for years. It's used, utilized by employees there. So I'm in support of this. I was in support of it two months ago.
Do you want to proceed with the vote?
Well, I think Mr. Boxine would like to make a few comments and.
Okay.
I just, I was, thank you for the discussion, Mr. Igo. I'd like, just to clarify a few things. The structures that are there to support the solar canopies are in no way whatever would be construed as building something that in the future we would build upon that for a parking garage. The structures in height, meeting with the fire department, they actually took one of their vehicles through the parking lot, one of the emergency rescue. And in describing them on the field, when we met with them, they have to be built to a height. So if they ever had to have emergency vehicles on the site, they would be able to pass underneath along with fire engines underneath the canopy. So there's no, we lower them down and it makes no sense because then you wouldn't be able to get emergency vehicles or any tall vehicles underneath the canopies. I have personally built parking garages in my career as an architect and engineer. And the structures that they're going to support the canopies with would never ever support a parking garage. They would have to be completely removed and we build a parking garage so that.
I'm not saying that you, and I don't mean to interrupt you, but I'm not saying that you're going to put a parking garage on top of it. I'm saying this constitutes a parking garage. That's my position. What you have here, I'm not talking about in the future, you guys put the second floor on it.
Right, that's fine, your interpretation. They also, my father spent some time after being in the hospital, he spent some time at Spalding Rehab and Sandwich. I don't know if you know that that site, but that site has solar canopies on it, supports the healthcare operation of Spalding Rehab. Healthcare organizations around the country and around the world, like part of this healthcare without harm, are doing this to help support our goal, our global reduction of use of energy. So this is again, you know, I'm just saying this, you can take your vote tonight, obviously you can take your vote. But again, this is our little piece to benefit that it's a dual use for the parking lot. It's a great for the hospital. It's a great look for the hospital. But again, it's up to you on your vote. And I really appreciate you doing this case for us.
Okay, thank you very much. Is anybody prepared to make a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I've interrupted you again, but do you mind if we take a step outside just for a couple of minutes? Is that okay?
You're welcome to take a step outside.
Okay, thank you. We'll be right back.
I've noticed that sometimes when I speak before I've taken a step outside, my foot is really in that mould, so sure. All right, why don't we take a five minute break, okay? So I'll be back.
Didn't we, you wouldn't know, you wouldn't know this far, but is there going to be a little street at the electric company? Because I think we approved that. I seem to remember coming, I don't know, I can't remember, maybe it was design review or something like that.
Did they show you what this might look like?
No, no.
How high are they going to be?
I didn't mean to put you on a hot seat.
They already have big buildings which have already used up.
Nice to meet you. No. Oh, I'm sorry. I only have two. Oops, sorry. Sorry, I'll try to speak up. I don't speak.
Fifty acres of woods cleared.
This is great, yeah.
How high are these going to be? I didn't, I didn't hear it.
Fourteen or sixteen feet, yeah. My new glasses are not helping. Is it on this maybe? No, this is the topography. I saw it written somewhere. No, it was written somewhere. Oh, I'll ask when I'm back.
And it's not going to be over the whole parking lot, right? It's just going to be certain areas?
Just where the already existing spaces are. So that it's like, it's not, it's just where the spaces are. And then the fire trucks can get around and they took them out there to make sure that they could.
Not going over the lawn. Maintaining all the trees.
There's a section in here on wind energy.
Yeah.
Relatively speaking, it should be in the same light. And there's structures at all for wind energy.
And that's all defined and I think it's, oh, that's why I mentioned, I think it's time to the planning board to some definitions and so forth for solar installations. Yours, good. This is at least relatively appropriate. And usually very appropriate.
A videographer is coming right in, so let's see if we can get going.
You just see if he's here.
Hey, oh, Mr. Martin's checking on a videographer. Must be nice to have technical knowledge, you know? I don't want to turn my computer off at night for fear I'm going to lose everything. So where are we, guys and gals?
Thanks for making a comment.
Sure.
I just wanted to comment that, you know, from a bylaws perspective, the one thing I did find is is something that under wind energy, we don't have anything on solar, but we do have something on wind. And it states clearly that we're, the bylaw is to facilitate the use of renewable sustainable energy. So I think it's a good, a good use. I think it's recommended by use and I'd just like to see, like to see it happen. So sorry, I disagree with Mr. Igor on this one.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, if I may?
Sure.
Thank you for indulging us. We would like to move to withdraw this application without prejudice this evening.
Well, that's your right to ask. Anybody prepared to make a motion to allow him to withdraw this petition without prejudice? Please indicate.
So moved.
Mr. Frappery moves. Is there a second to that?
That was Mr. Martin.
Oh, Mr. Martin, I'm sorry.
I'll second.
A second by Mr. Frappery. Do any of the board members want to have any discussion on that before we're proceeding to a vote on the motion to allow withdrawal without prejudice?
Mr. Chairman, what is the vote required necessary for them to withdraw? Is it majority or do they need a super majority?
I'm sorry?
How many votes do they need to withdraw?
Well, I can't vote and you have to have four votes to pass anything on this board, right?
No, I think, I think it's a simple.
Oh, procedurally, no, no, that's right. We just did that with the rules and regulations. No, so three.
Okay.
Anything else, Sean?
No.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. We'll do a roll call vote, please. Mr. Igo?
Aye.
Ms. Omar?
Aye.
Ms., Mr. I've been talking all day long. Mr. Frappery?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Wow, that's great. So on a roll call vote, that passes four to zero. And nice talking with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Have a good night.
I wonder if we chased our building commissioner away.
He's still here.
No, he's still there.
Oh, he's here. Good, good. Our next petition is that of 4955, Simple Signs of Cape Cod Inc., 648 Route 28, West Yanath, Mass. Property of your being in the zoning district B2. This evening, our applicant seeks to overturn the decision of the building commissioner for the February 23, 22 violation notice issued regarding building permit and/or a variance from section, under section 305.5.4.1 to exceed the maximum allowed size and relief from setback requirements. That's the public notice. Good evening.
How you doing, board? I said, how's everybody doing tonight?
Yeah, we're doing great.
Great, thank you.
Why don't you go ahead and present?
All right, I have a summary here and I gave everybody a binder. I hope you went over it. We applied for a permit for the sign that we have and we were issued a permit in June of 2021. We fabricated and installed the supporting structure and the framework. And supporting structure is words right out of the zoning bylaw. Then we installed the sign onto the supporting structure. Someone complained about our sign, so the building inspector came out to investigate. He did measure the sign. When he measured it, he mistakenly measured the supporting structure, not the framework of the sign. Not the framework, not the supporting structure. He didn't measure the sign. He measured the supporting structure and framework. Our sign that's attached to the supporting structure is basically this. This is scaled down from it, which is 96 inches by 22 inches, which is 15 square feet. The supporting structure, which is allowed, is 10 feet by 5 feet. We were issued a violation notice and here we are. So we did all the footwork as far as went around and looked at some other. We were issued a violation notice, and here we are, so we did all the footwork, as far as went around and looked at some other signs and supporting structures. And if you go through, you can see first the permit that was issued. And then you can see what other signs and supporting structures look like, and what's permitted and what's allowed, and our sign is our sign, our supporting structure is our supporting structure, we can pull the sign off at any time and leave that supporting structure and framework standing there.
Okay. Is there anything else you wanted to say about your petition?
No, that's pretty much it, I, we believe we're in absolute rights, we, uh, it, it's pretty cut and dry in, in the zoning bylaw. Zoning bylaw states that the area of a sign shall include all lettering, designs and symbols together with the background, whether open or enclosed, upon which they display, are displayed, not including in this definition is any supporting framework or molding incidental to the display itself.
All right, well, thank you. Mr. Igo, any questions about petition?
I'm, I'm looking at the things here, reviewing the bylaw, so I, I guess to, to understand this, I know where the sign is. So the petition is telling us that he advertises his business and he built this big sign, a, a big frame, and because he took the name of his business off, he's allowed to keep the structure that's sitting there, is that what I'm understanding?
No.
Okay, maybe it, tell me what I missed.
We didn't take the name of the business off, we built the supporting structure first, and then we attached our sign to it.
Okay.
The sign.
Does that meet the setbacks, that structure that you built?
We spoke with Down Cape Engineering, and they can't get, they gave us an estimate, actually, a quote for, to come out and measure and find out what the setback is. But they do not, they don't have any availability for eight or nine months, they said they're out, want to give them a deposit.
Well, I think my, my understanding is you need to be thirty feet back, don't you, for a structure?
Absolutely not, that's, that's the framework, support structure and framework for the sign, for a, for a, no, you don't have to be, you have to be six feet off the property line.
Okay. For what?
For the supporting structure of a sign.
Well, okay, well, I, I think we're talking about two things here, aren't we? You, you took your sign off, so now you just have a structure there, right?
We didn't take the sign off, this is, this is just a mock-up of what's on there, the sign is, we put the framework up, the supporting structure slash framework up, and then we took our sign and attached it to it, same as if you were gonna put two poles in the ground and put a sign on it, or if you were going to put any of these other supporting structures and signs up, like Maplewood has, which is fully permitted and, and allowed, the two granite posts and the fence, that is their supporting structure, and then they put their sign on, which is their Maplewood sign. Yarmouth Commons has all that stonework, which is
Well, I, I don't, I don't know that we need to talk about them, why don't we just concentrate on yours, we don't have any of that, that's not before us tonight, I don't believe.
Sure.
I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to understand your rationale here, what, what is sitting there right now, in your opinion?
Our sign is sitting on a supporting structure that, if we leave, if we move out of that building, we would take, like anybody else in town takes their sign down, so we would take this off of what's there, and still, the supporting structure, be it a, what we have there, which is a, you can call it a monument if you wanted to, I guess, or if you had two posts and a backlit sign cabinet, or if you had a wooden sign and posts, the person leaving would take their sign off and leave the supporting structure there, generally.
Okay, do you have a building permit for that structure?
No, we have a sign permit, which was approved with the supporting structure in it.
Where is that?
That is, if you turn to the yellow section of your binder,
Yep.
you'll see where the building permit was signed off on seven, on 62521.
That's just the sign.
That's for the sign, yes.
Well, and that's for simple signs, correct?
Yes, sir.
And that's the piece of, of, that you have to your left?
Right, but this isn't the actual, this is not the
Yeah, but I, I'm just saying, when I'm looking at your sign, it looks like that sign.
That's it, yeah.
Is that the sign, is that the sign that the town approved?
That's what the town approved on what we proposed, we gave them existing and a proposed.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm just, the application, I, I see it right here. Where does it say, where does it say the, uh, size of the sign? Ninety-six by twenty-two, free standing sign?
Exactly.
Okay. Okay.
What, when the exist, is there, was a six-foot by three-foot sign cabinet, and that was the code back then, when you're allowed eighteen square feet. That, that doesn't include the supporting structure, the supporting structure that was there was approximately nine feet tall and almost nine feet wide, eight and a half feet wide, was the existing supporting structure, so we took that down, we put up a different supporting structure, and attached our sign to it.
I see, oh, I see what you used to have there, okay, so you took that, so. Well, I, I'm a little confused here now, what? What, what, what did you, what was approved, am I looking at the one that it says existing?
On the, the existing was what was there when we applied for the permit, because that
And then it says Happy Retirement Sandy Clark on it, is that correct?
That's when we applied for the permit, yes.
Okay, and that's what was approved by the town?
No, that was, that was the existing sign, because when we put a sign permit through, we have to give you the existing, what's there, which that's what was there at the time, and then the proposed new sign enabled next to it, and then the measurements of the sign, they do not ask for the measurements of the supporting structure, and they didn't ask for the measurements of what the new posts or anything would be, or any supporting structure, or they don't ask for
What is the dimensions of the structure that you have there right now?
Five foot by ten foot.
Five foot by?
Ten foot wide.
Okay, and it's, and it's your position that that's not a violation?
Yes, because we're allowed to go up to eight feet wide and twelve feet tall, no, not eight feet wide, I'm sorry, it, it doesn't give you a width on the supporting structure, it tells us we're allowed to go, our sign is allowed to be twelve feet tall.
Twelve feet tall?
Feet tall is the, to the highest point, that's what is in the zoning bylaw.
Where?
That's in the 303.541. No part of the sign shall be more than twelve feet in height above the average natural, well, that's the height of the sign, that's not the size of the sign, you can't have twelve feet underneath you.
Correct, but you have to get it up there somehow, and you're gonna get it up there with supporting structure.
Well, we'll talk about that in just a second, okay? All right, in case of double face, eight feet will be allowed, well, that's good. All parts of freestanding shall have a minimum of six feet from the property line. Okay. All parts of this type of freestanding shall centers, the business centers. Those are three more tenants, how many tenants do you have in your building? Just you?
Just us, yes, sir.
Okay. Eight square feet. Okay, so. Well, my understanding is, I, I think it's I'm looking for the square footage, I haven't seen these signs lately. We see much violation here. You're essentially including all living signs and symbols together with the background, whether open or enclosed, upon which they are displayed. Okay, so, um, and I noticed you highlighted, that you are highlighting, correct?
Yes, sir.
That's what you's highlighted, so you've highlighted his zone, his violation, just so we're clear on that, right?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay. All right. All right, well, the, one thing, I'm reading this, together with the background, you're using that structure as a background, are you not?
No. The sign has to go on something.
Well, we understand that, but aren't you using what's there as a background?
What else are we gonna, we, what, what, we have to put the sign on something, and we can
Well, I understand, but you, 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 you need to read what this, I'm, I'm only reading, I'm, I'm not trying to argue with you, I'm just trying to see if you're in agreement with me, it says here, the area of a sign shall include all lettering, designs and symbols, together with the background, whether open or enclosed, upon which they are displayed. Now, are you not taking a sign and displaying it on that as a background?
This.
Yeah?
Could say, is this, this is the, this is the sign.
Yeah.
On the background.
So you're saying that's, that's the sign and the background?
Yeah, this is the matter.
But weren't you using this, this other structure as the background before, when you got the violation notice?
No, no, it's not, it's not a background, it's a supporting structure for the sign, which is allowed, which is in
Okay, well, that's, I, I, no, 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 I, I understand completely where you're coming from, I'm just trying to understand the violation here as I read it.
I don't believe there is one.
Well, okay.
The permit. With the you're, you're looking at the exact permit paper that we, uh, applied with.
One frequency per business shall having a maximum face area of twenty-four square feet, so that right there, if we were to suggest that that represented the background, you'd have fifty square feet, right?
Right, but that's not the background, this is the background.
I know, I understand your position, but I'm just, so we're all on the same page. With a maximum face height or width of eight feet will be allowed. Okay. All right, well, I I haven't heard from the building commissioner yet, but I, I'm just trying to understand, I, I'm reading this, I've driven by that sign many times, so to me, I'll let others speak, but to me, it looks like that is your sign. I mean, you could put anything on that, you could put, you know, big sale today, that's your background. I don't, I'm not
Existing two posts that used to be there, that we took down, would have, you would have counted that as our sign, and that would have never been permitted, what was permitted was the, originally, years ago, was the actual three-by-six box, which was eighteen square feet, that was our sign at the time.
Well, you see, you see your old existing sign there?
The, the supporting structure was everything else that was around that, which was the post, the, the piece across the top and a piece across the bottom, that supporting that sign cabinet. Now, what our supporting structure is, we took that supporting structure down and put up a different supporting structure. The other one would have been over seventy-two square feet, if you
Well, I can see, I can see the posts on the others, I, I'm seeing a little different I, I'm seeing something a little different here, does that still say simple signs if I drive by tonight? I know you have a sign in your hand, but that's not the same one, right?
That's not the sign, that's just a scaled-down version of what's on this, on there.
So, if we drove by that tonight, we're still gonna see where it says simple signs, correct?
Yes, you sure are.
And how is that attached?
Um, with studs. And it comes right off, we, we put a pattern up, we drill into the supporting structure, we put pheno seal into the holes, we put pheno seal on the studs, and we slide the sign onto the supporting structure, and it holds it, that's how that's attached, so if we move, we would take our sign with us and leave the supporting structure. If we still had the old sign that was pre-existing, we would take our sign panel with us and leave everything else up there, which was the supporting structure, which would include the cabinet, the post, the top beam, the bottom beam.
Well, I, I, I don't know, I'm not, I mean, I, I guess others can have their own opinion, I'm just trying to understand this right here. And, and I have any, I, I don't even know, I, I guess the building department or the commissioner's gonna tell us A, B, C, well, it's gonna say what your violation here is. See the allowed size, which, a literal reading, I would tend to agree with it, also appears a new sign is not located the required six feet away from the lot line, is it six feet away from the lot line?
That I cannot tell you, because like I said, we spoke with and got a, a quote from Down Cape Engineering, from when we give them a deposit on the job, they are eight to nine months out.
All right, let, let me interrupt for a second, okay? Can even consider this, if we don't know where it's located? It's a specific requirement that it be six feet back from the lot line, and we can't even be told that. You can raise your, sure.
It's, it's further away from the street than the original existing?
The original one has nothing to do with what's before us tonight, though, the original one you could have kept up. And, and honestly, I, I just, I'm not understanding why we even are taking a, a lot of time on this. First of all, in 304, 303.5.4.1, there is no calculation involved whatsoever of, you know, how you go about calculating the size of the sign, sign, that is specifically within the definitions portion of the so-called sign code at, at 303.2, and it's on page two of it, because it goes alphabetically and it says calculation of sign area. 303.5 is specifically dealing with signs within the B1, B2, B3 zones, as well as the VCODs, so if, if, and it's very clear, it has to be six feet back. And he's telling us he can't, he can't tell us that that's accurate, and quite frankly, I don't care about his engineer not being able to do it for, for a while, get the engineer's report and, and come and join us. I, I mean, Mr. Grill, would you come up to the microphone, please? Would you continue to consider this an ongoing violation if, if what this board needs is a, is a plot, is a plot plan that shows, a certified plot plan that shows location?
In my opinion, it is a violation, but while it's, while it's under appeal, the, the violations
Do not impose the violation.
Correct, I can't impose any fines.
And there won't be any retroactive imposition of it either, will there?
No, absolutely not.
So where's the harm and where's the foul of making sure we're in, you're in compliance of this? You know? I, I, I find it hard to believe it takes eight months to get something, but you may be right.
Yeah, that was, I have it in an email from them, I don't have it with me, but
No, that's fine, that's
Yeah, every, all of the surveyors are, are six, eight months out.
I think there's another issue here, though, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
And that is, what are you looking at right there? Because I think if you read calculation of sign area under A, the area of the sign shall include all lettering, designs and symbols together with the background. Is this board looking at that structure right there, saying that's not the background, that's just a a structure sitting there doing nothing? I, I'm not interpreting that, I'm interpreting that as the background of the sign.
I have to agree, I, when I drove through, that's what I thought it was, I thought the sign was the entire, the entire structure, the way it was laid out, but I'm also just, just, can I make a couple of comments? Sean, is that right? How, how large was, not, not the total area of the previous sign, the one that you had, the top portion which was framing in what, where the sign was? Not, not including the bottom area of the
Top portion including the framing? Approximately nine feet by, the old one is three feet with a six-by-six, so we'll call it four feet by nine feet, which is gonna say thirty-six square feet.
So four, four by nine, and this one is five by ten, is what you said, right? With the frame, the whole framing?
Well, the whole framing on the other one is, is nine by nine, or eight by nine.
One of my concerns is, I drove through the property, okay? The sign is fairly good size, it's, I think it's too close to the road, so I think you It's, I think it's too close to the road, so I think you have to get, no matter what, you're gonna have to get that checked out before we can approve this, because it, I, I got blocked. I couldn't even see the road. When I was trying to pull back out, I couldn't see traffic going out on the, on the, uh, I think it was the west side of your parking lot.
Okay, well, if that's a safety issue, I'm, yeah, absolutely.
I, I was, I was concerned with that to begin with. And the fact is, the fully, because it doesn't have the see-through that you had on the old sign, I think it's a problem that you can't see. So there's a visibility issue. That may not be in here, but there's a safety issue. And I just wanted to bring that one up as something to think about if you're gonna go back and check some things out. I think it's too close to the road and I think it's blocking a visibility. So those are two things you should consider no matter what. Oh, I'm sorry, Sean, if I interrupted you.
Well, I, I just wanna bring the board back around here. This is a violation of the sign code, no matter where it is.
I agree.
It could be 12 feet off the road. We're asked tonight to determine whether that's a sign sitting there and if it is, it exceeds the, uh, area allowed for a sign.
I think there's two, there's two things that are listed. One is where it's positioned and what the size is. So there's two things that are.
No, no, we're gonna, you know what? We're gonna put some order to this, okay? So you keep your hand down until we're done, the board is done talking, all right? And, and one or the other of the members talk, but let's not carry on a conversation here all night.
I, I'm done, so.
Okay, anything else, Sean?
Uh, no, not at this time.
Is Omar, what are your thoughts? Any questions of the petition?
I don't really have any questions. I'm trying to figure out if that is the entirety of the sign or if it is a structure holding a sign. And I don't know honestly enough about sign, signage to know the difference.
Okay. Mr. Martin?
Yeah, I'd have the same, same comments about the six feet. If it's not six feet, then that's problem number one. I, I think the concern here is this, this is, it stands with the color, colors going, being what they are and the yellow, orange, whatever, all the way to top, I can see why somebody would look at this as a singular sign as opposed to something like the Yarmouth Commons or the Maplewood examples, which have just the lettering on a big stone thing. Um, if those colors, if it was all just, you know, the brown, let's say, that was on the bottom, then I, I could see your case a little bit more, but it, it would appear just from the color scheme and so forth going on, that the whole thing looks like a sign to me. Um, so therein lies my problem. I suspect that that's probably the problem that the, uh, the building department has too, in terms of the interpretation of this. And, uh, guess that's all I have to say.
You know, I'm not gonna say anything until I hear from the building commissioner. Sure, come right up.
Tim Sees, Deputy Building Commissioner. Um, just one thing I do wanna clarify is that if you look at the application, the original proposed sign does not have a painted background. So once it was painted, that was not what the permit was issued for.
Yeah.
So once we saw that it was painted, then we considered that as a whole sign at that point, and that's why the violation notice was written. So it was not done according to the permit that was issued. So we, yes, we did issue a permit, but that's not what was, that was not what was put up. That was the thing I wanted to clarify, so that's why we consider it. We do consider that whole thing a sign, that's why we sent the violation out.
I would like to answer that.
Yeah, just a second, please, okay? I'm gonna give you every opportunity to say whatever you want, but we're gonna do it on my rules.
Sure.
So I, are you, I, who authored the violation notice?
I did.
Okay.
Yeah.
So let's run down here and, because you do come to the definitions section of the bylaw and you do the same language, uh, you cite to the same language. Uh, not, not included in this definition is any supporting framework or molding included in the display itself. What do you interpret that to be?
So, yeah, so we kinda, so as, you know, he had mentioned like the Yarmouth Commons sign. So when he had it, just with the sign, with the, with what you would consider a monument, maybe that, you know, we, at that time, it was determined that that was the supporting structure of the sign and the other part that he showed on there was the sign. But then when it was installed, that was not what he installed.
Well, I gotta tell you, I sat on the revision of the sign code and we spent a lot of time on it. I think, Mr. Martin, did you participate in that too, didn't you?
Yep.
And to show you how far back that goes, Paul McBride was very, uh, involved in it as well. Uh, the poor deceased Paul, who we all knew and loved. So, you know, this was intended to be, uh, uh, thinking about future village centers where you have a wrought iron, uh, holder on the side of a building that hangs out and holds a picture of maybe a cobbler's boot or whatever, or, or the name of the building. Certainly not something that creates a structure. So, uh, you know.
Yeah, there is, there has been discussion in the department that, that permit was probably issued in error, but that's, you know, that's internal discussion that we have had since this came up.
But, but what is your take on what, on that cited language? That's very specific cited language.
You know, I think, I, looking at it a couple of different times, I think, you know, you, I think, you know, you could make the argument either way, with just the, just the, the lettering with the background. I guess you could say that that's not all a sign and then you could say it. I guess you could interpret it either way, but we interpreted as that, it was interpreted at the time that that was not, the whole thing at that time was not a sign. But then it was not installed as it was proposed. So that was the reason why, once it was discovered that it wasn't installed that way, then we wrote a violation. Because I know we did, you know, at that point, to us, it was obvious that the whole thing was a sign at that point.
Okay, don't leave, because I know our petition had, I wanted to say something. Did you wanna ask him any questions?
Yes, um, there's no area in the bylaw that says what color you can paint the supporting structure. Our old one was yellow and that is our color, one of our colors, yellow and blue, um, and white. So the, the old existing was yellow and that was fully permitted. And the new one, we decided after we put it up, that we were going to paint the supporting structure and there's nothing in the bylaw that says that we can't paint the supporting structure any color. It doesn't, it doesn't say it, except day glow, we can't paint it.
But when you paint it with your business, with, with what you just said, are, are our colors, doesn't that then make it part of the sign?
No.
Okay, well, I guess that's what we're here to determine, aren't we? So is there anything else you wanted to say into?
Uh, no, other than, you know, if that had been proposed, we probably would have, you know, had him come here just to have you determine whether it was a sign or not, you know, before it was put up. I guess I would just say that, you know?
All right.
That's it, okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And I see you here, Mark, was there anything you wanted to chime in on this, or?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
You have any questions for me?
I don't have any questions for you. Do you have any questions of this man?
Yes. If we painted that gray, um, would you allow us to keep it and maybe possibly let the board issue a, a variance for the setback, being that it's in the same exact spot as the last sign?
Um, as Tim had mentioned, we had an internal conversation regarding whether or not the permit should have been issued in the first place. And once I saw that, I didn't think that it should have been issued. I thought we should have had a discussion at that time. So variances, I, to us in the building department, whatever the board chooses to grant variances for every lot in every instance is, is, stands on its own merits. I have no say in that and, you know, only the board can. We don't really, it doesn't really much matter to us. Um, but the, again, the permit was issued with the, I mean, this is a difficult one because of the colors that you have in the background. You clearly made it look like the entire sign. I know that's not your intent, but that's what it looks like. The gray in the background, that, you know, I can see how maybe the permit was issued. I still disagree. I don't think that it should have ever been issued, but, um, it was issued, I'll give you that. And, um, whether or not the permit's valid, if you're in error, in violation of the bylaw, this is what we're here for, to figure out if that's actually a violation.
By issuing that permit, you cost us five to $6,000.
All right, well, yeah, you know, I'm not gonna get into that, please, okay? We, we haven't even decided it yet, so let's not. Thank you. I, I just wanna know if these two gentlemen can leave because they live in Plymouth and I know they wanna get going. Did you want anything else from them? Did any board member want anything, uh, from the two members of the building department?
No.
All right, thank you. Gentlemen, please get on the road, go home, drive safe.
Thank you, guys. Good luck, Charlie.
Thanks, thanks, Mark.
All right. Meg, did I call on you yet? I'm, I'm picking on you.
You did already call me.
Okay. Jay, anything you wanted to ask of the petitioner?
No, I've asked everything.
And, and Dick, anything you wanted to ask of the petitioner?
Hmm, no, I don't think I have anything else, although I think if that was all painted, that would make a big difference.
Well, I'm gonna ask, you know, we, we're talking about a building permit having issued. So if you'd go to, it's not numbered, but it's in the, uh, it's in the yellow tab.
Sure.
And it shows an existing and it shows a proposed.
Right.
So that, that existing, uh, is whatever it is. And thank you for showing us the one where you wished Cindy Clark a happy retirement. You were looking for favor, weren't you? And so we look at the proposed sign and that, that sign that you've, you've shown specifically, it's, uh, 96 by 22, right?
Yes, yes, sir.
And that, that structure upon which the sign is, is placed, that you showed as proposed, that's certainly not 10 by 5 feet, is it?
It is.
That's 10 by 5?
The, the structure, this supporting structure is 10 feet wide and 5 foot tall, yes, sir.
That thing that I'm looking at there, the gray.
That, yeah, that which made out of this material right here.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. All right, anybody have any questions of our petitioner beyond? It's already been asked. Hearing none, does anybody in our public wish to care and speak in favor of this petition? If so, come on up to the microphone, let us know who you are. Seeing none, does anybody in our audience care to speak in opposition to this petition? If so, please come to the microphone, let us know who you are. And does anybody in our virtual audience, uh, show any interest in speaking in favor or in opposition? We don't have any virtual audience tonight, do we?
We did.
Okay. So we now close it to input on the petition, particularly public input. We may have questions of you, sir, as we go along deliberations, but, uh, the presentations and the public's been invited. There is none. And so now we go to board discussion, uh, motions, deliberation motion and vote. Mr. Martin?
Um, I, I mean, I, I, I have to agree with the building inspector in terms of how, how that can be interpreted in terms of the size of the sign. Uh, I think it can be corrected easily enough. And, but it also would have to be moved if that's within six feet. Um, I don't think the, uh, we're not dealing with a variance right now, but I don't think it meets the criteria of variance, just as, as an aside. So, uh, I have, I would have to concur with the building department in terms of their interpretation at this point.
Okay. And Mr. Frapri?
Well, yeah, my, my main concern is, is obviously the setback. Um, I don't know that it's there. I need, I think you need to find that out first before we can do anything. And, um, I, I would encourage you to do something to provide the sightlines, improve the sightlines, because I really think it is an issue. The old sign, you could see under it, so it's right at the line of when you're in a car and you're trying to pull out. And I think it's a danger, so I would be concerned about that. That's all I have.
Okay. Meg, any questions or comments on?
No.
Where we stand on this?
I don't have any.
Sean?
Uh, I just wanna look here. Okay, so, um, tonight we're being asked either reverse the decision of the building inspector and the alternative, uh, issue of variance. I don't believe this meets the criteria for a variance. In terms of reversing this decision of the building inspector, I've read the violation notice and I've looked at what is sitting there right now. My interpretation is that is one sign right now that it's sitting there, five by 10. And so if I were to interpret what that is, I would interpret that to be a violation of our sign code. So I would be voting not to overturn the decision of the building inspector. Um, and should the petitioner go forward with a request for a variance? Um, I don't think he meets the criteria for a variance. He doesn't know what his setback is, but even so, I would not be inclined to grant a variance for this size of a sign. Um, because I don't, he think he meets the criteria for variance. Thank you.
Thank you. And, uh, my way in is to say that, again, I sat on that sign committee. This is substantially what we all came up with and was passed at town meeting. And I'm pretty confident that this constitutes a sign in its totality, particularly with the custom paint job. Moreover, that's on the, that's on the overturning of the building commissioner. I, I don't think that there is compelling evidence to support that the building commissioner's determination was in error. So I'm not, I'm going to weigh in on that and say I'll be opposed to that portion of the relief. As to the variance, I couldn't, uh, do anything other than vote a, against it if it's presented to us tonight and, and we were asked to vote on it. First of all, it's way too close to the street. But it has to be six feet off. And I don't know that it's six feet, or it's allowed to be up to six feet off. I don't know that it's six feet or, or, or three feet. I, I don't know. I, I don't even know how I'm supposed to guess. I'm not going out there with a tape measure to figure it out.
20 inches from the street itself.
Huh?
It is 120 inches from the street itself, I believe.
But it all depends where the street layout is.
Right, yeah, no, it's not from the property line. I'm with you, 100%. I, I don't know what property line is.
Yeah. Uh, and, and, you know, I, I, I don't mean to be picking on you because I, I think you have a great business and I, frankly, I like the colors on the sign. But it's all a sign in my mind and it's been purposely painted to be all a sign. Uh, we went through some of this to just so you know, we're not picking on you. Uh, we went through this and I, I know, uh, Mr. Martin will remember this, when McDonald's wanted to uh, reconfigure their store and they wanted to, you know, make more, make it more modern and add a drive-up lane. You remember that?
Yep.
And we talked about all those signs and the board signs and all of that. And it was very much like this. We told them they had to keep the size down to stay in conformity.
And they did.
And, you know, the whole thing was a structure, whether it was an egg or McMuffin or a burger with cheese. So, um, anybody prepared to make, would you like us to go forward?
Um, I'd like to be able to ask a question.
Sure, you go right ahead.
Painted the supporting structure, say gray or dark gray, um, and brought it back to the proper setback, which we can't find anything about the setback until, and I'll give them a deposit tomorrow to come, to come out and, you know, show you guys the receipt that they're coming.
Yeah, I can, I can't, I can't support anything in the abstract, okay?
Sure.
Until, until it's there, I, I'm not gonna support.
Well, if we moved it within the six feet of the property line and painted the, the supporting structure.
That's probably more a question for the building, building commissioner, actually.
Yeah. I, I mean, then I think you go back to the building inspector and you ask him, is it now considered all a sign or not? Uh, does he issue another violation notice? That's up to him, we, we don't tell him what to do. He enforces the zoning regulations as he deems appropriate. And, uh, and, and I can't, you know, say to you, I can't say to you, I could affirmatively vote on anything that's in the abstract. We don't know what it is. You know? Because it's not here and it's my fault and you.
Right.
I mean, you probably went over to BS group and they, they told you they're out for the next 10 years, but, you know.
Yeah, they didn't even get back to us.
Yeah, okay. Uh, so let, let's, unless there's something else, let's proceed to a motion, uh, uh, on a motion I'd asked somebody to consider making on the.
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
On the first part of the relief.
I'd like to make a motion that we uphold the decision of the building inspector.
I'll second that.
Anybody wanna have any discussion on that before proceeding to a roll call vote? Okay, hearing none. Uh, Mr. Igo?
Aye.
Ms. Homer?
Aye.
Mr. Frapri?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
And I'm a resounding aye, yeah. So that And I'm a resounding aye. Yeah. So that part of the relief is denied on the motion and made and seconded to uphold the decision of the building inspector. That was the exact motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
On the question of the variance, I would suggest that I don't believe the petitioner fully understands the requirements that he needs to meet in order to get a variance. He's not prepared to ask for it tonight. He doesn't have the proper location of his sign. He doesn't know what it is. So maybe we suggest that he withdraw his request for a variance without prejudice or request that and that he might want to come back to us at a further date.
Yeah, that, once he files that request for variance, that will probably trigger the building department's bans on any fines continuing. So probably the quicker filed the better.
Or we can vote on it.
Well, I, I mean, that's one point of view, but it's, do you want that to occur or do you want to withdraw it without prejudice?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right. So that being requested, the petitioner's request, anybody prepared to make a motion to allow its withdrawal without prejudice?
So moved.
Mr. Martin?
Yep. Second.
I'm sorry. I, I write slower than my mind works sometimes. Allow withdrawal without prejudice on variance request, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so let me just tell you before we go on that motion, there will be a decision that's going to be drafted. It will be filed with the town clerk's office denying your first form of relief you sought. That is something that within 20 days, you have a right to appeal from. That's up to you entirely if you want to do that or not. I, I do look forward to you coming back with a variance request if you think that's the proper relief to seek. Okay? As Mr. Igo says, please learn what a variance is before coming in because it's, it's not an easy thing to get in most instances. Okay?
I went to two different lawyers locally and neither one of them would touch this.
Well, I can't speak to them before you leave. So we're going to have a roll call vote on this. Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Frapri?
Aye.
Ms. Homer?
Aye.
Mr. Igo?
Aye.
Mr. DeYoung's an aye. That, that means that we have allowed the withdrawal of that petition, that part of, portion of the petition, seeking a variance without prejudice. Okay?
Great. Thank you, guys. I appreciate it. Have a good night.
Thank you. All right. Last thing on our agenda this evening is petition 4956, Michael J. Vissens, I'm hoping I'm saying that right, and Sandra McGinnis. And that's concerning property at 74 Captain Wright Road, South Yonah, Mass. That property being in the zoning district R40. This evening our applicant seeks a special permit or pursuant to 104.3.2, subparagraph two, or variance pursuant to 203.5 of our bylaws to construct a 12, 25 foot, I'm sorry, by 14 foot deck within the side setback. Come right up. You know, somebody has to go last, right?
I guess so.
Tell us who you are.
My name is Michael Vissens and I live in 74 Captain Wright Road. And I guess I did request a petition for a side dead bag variance, like build, I expand my deck to the left of the house.
Okay, pretty straightforward what you're looking for.
I mean, kiss principle, keep it very simple.
Okay. Who do I want to pick on? Meg, you go first.
I don't think I have any questions.
Okay. Sean, I'm sorry.
I don't have any questions.
Sean, do you have any questions with the petitioner?
Just so I understand it, the relief that he's looking for, he's, it's seven and a half feet off the back, up the side lot line. As proposed, he needs 20, right? And then R40.
I think that's why, what I know.
Yeah. And by my understanding of where your house sits, you're quite a ways away from your neighbors, aren't you?
Yes, and he's a corner, the corner lot on, on the hall he set sideways in the, in the lot.
Yeah, yeah. And those can be very difficult lots to work with, especially where you're kitty cornered in like that. It really gives you less room than you think. It, it looks nice, but, no, that, that's all I, that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Martin?
So there's an existing deck there that's much smaller now, right?
It's 12 by 12, the, the one that's right there. And if I go back, I, I, I go right over the septic tank. And if I go right.
So if you go looking at the plan, if you went to the right, you're over the septic. Is that right?
I go back to the house.
So because of that, that's why we're encroaching more into the sideline?
Yes.
Well, corner lots are difficult and I understand that. Seven and a half feet's a little closer than I might like to see to the sideline. So I guess is, is it fenced back there or heavily treed or anything or?
We have trees on that section. Yeah. And I, you know, the, the neighbor that gets affected, his name is Lou Torio. I, before I did the petition, I really approached him first to see.
So that neighbor to your?
That neighbor here?
No, I mean, he didn't give me, he's a very quiet guy.
So he's, he's comfortable with what?
He said he willing to put it on.
So he's comfortable with what you plan? Okay. That's all I have.
Otherwise I would not. I mean, he was a person.
He's the, he's the only one that's really affected, so.
All right.
Okay, Mr. Frapri?
It's, you're removing the old deck and replacing it with a whole.
Yes.
And I understand it's a tough lot, so I understand. I have no question.
Thank you. Well, I, you know, just so when we consider these things in the future, I, I remember when we allowed a shed to be about six feet off the property line adjacent to a road because it's the only place the guy could put it. Does anyone remember that?
I remember that.
So here we have two roads and it is a corner lot. And that usually causes me to feel like, oh, boy, I, I can support a lot of relief there. But I just want to point out, these two roads have nothing to do with the, the need for relief. In other words, it's not because he's fronting on two different roads that this comes into place. It's because he wants to rebuild them and larger deck. So what is that, a bulkhead I'm looking at? Is there a bulkhead?
Ah, to, if I'm looking setting from the, when I go on the, the, on the deck to the right is the bulkhead.
It looks like it's right under this deck.
No, I think that's actually the existing deck. It's not, that's the existing deck.
Oh, that's the existing deck? Could you fit a grill on that?
No, we have the house in the corner.
Listen, I know where the house.
My, my wife, she's the one, I mean, I wouldn't leave it the way it is, but she wants to make it big.
Don't you be blaming your wife, particularly on TV. Look, I gotta tell you, you know, I know your house and, and I gotta say this. I don't know it because of any ill repute. I just know it because of having gone over there. And to me, there's not going to be anybody affected except for the fellow that you say has indicated to you. You tell us this truthfully, right?
Yes.
That he, he is not opposed to it.
No, I had a text from him and he said if needed, he can send a letter.
And there's also a tree buffer there, which is nice, right? Okay. So does anybody in our audience care to speak in favor of this petition? Please come right up. I'm so sorry we made you wait so late.
It's all right. I had nothing else to do. So, thank you. My name is Steve O'Neill. Steve O'Neill, 61 Captain Wheeler. We live probably about three houses back. We're not in, directly behind him, but we know Mr. Vissens is a very good neighbor, been very supportive of his work that he's done in, in the neighborhood as far as keeping his property whatsoever. So I have no problem. My wife and I have no problem with the stuff.
Great. And he keeps the yard clean, doesn't he?
He does a very good job. He was a basketball player a long time ago, too.
That's nice. You can like him a lot better if he keeps the shot clean. All right.
You know, he was calling. I feel sorry because.
Yeah, you made him wait all this time. It's all your fault. So does anybody else care to speak in favor of the petition? If so, let us know by coming to the microphone. Seeing none. Does anybody care to speak in opposition to this petition? If so, come right up to the microphone. Tell us who you are. We're sorry we made you wait, too.
Interesting education. I'm Patrick Garland, 67 Captain Wheeler Road.
Give it to me again.
Patrick Garland.
Okay, thank you.
67 Captain Wheeler Road. I am like kitty quarter behind him, so next to the neighbor he was talking about. And as you all know, the house is already kitty corner on the lot, which means it's closer to my property than most houses would be if they had positioned that thing parallel to the road. It would be further from my house. And now what he wants to do is take and pull that deck even closer to my house. And that's why I have an objection to that. Because it's going to come out further than the existing deck that's there now.
Okay.
And, you know, zoning laws, you all know, were made so that we can have some distance between residents.
I think we know how to do it. I think we know our charge. Thank you. But that, that's why they have things called special permits and variance and stuff. In any event, anybody else care to speak in opposition to this? Please come to the microphone. And seeing none. Anybody want to have discussion before making a motion? Or anybody prepared to make a motion? And?
I might just add in terms of the last speaker that, you know, I think the only one really impacted here to speak of is the immediate butter. The deck, as planned here, looks to be at least 50 feet from, more than 50 feet probably from the corner that would be the corner of his lot. So that would certainly be more than enough setback under usual circumstances. So I think it's a, I think it's a logical request, one that we've given to many others in the past. And so I have no issue with.
Okay, thank you. Anybody prepared? Did you want to say anything, Mr. Frapri?
No, I didn't.
How about you, Meg?
I don't need to say anything.
How about you, Sean?
I, I would agree with, with what Dick said. And, you know, when you kitty corner a house on a lot like that, you have to understand in order to get the two corners 30 feet setback, you got to keep moving it back into the lot. And that unfortunately results in you not having much of the backyard sometimes. I agree with Dick, though. I, I, I think this deck, even though it is close to the lot line, I appreciate what the last speaker just said. Does not appear that it's going to adversely affect any of the neighbors. So we are cautious about giving that much relief, but I think they are on a case by case basis. And I do believe that this deck as proposed will not represent substantial detriment to the neighborhood. And will not be substantially more non-conforming. So I would, I would support it as well.
I think it meets all the criteria of the granted special permit.
I do.
It, it, and, and ruling in favor of this, if that's the way the vote goes, is very consistent with what we've done in the past concerning these sorts of petitions. I have every confidence that it will be built appropriately. Other, other building commissioner will tell you to take it down. Okay? And so I, I'm going to certainly vote in favor of a motion if made. Who's going to make a motion, if anybody?
I'll move petition number 4956 as required, as requested.
Without condition?
To approve it without, without conditions.
Okay. Second?
I'll second it.
We'll do it by roll call vote. Mr. Igo?
Aye.
And this is on the motion to grant the special permit. Then we'll need to deal with the variance. And you would, are going to want to withdraw that variance without prejudice, right? Because we can't act on both.
Say that again? I mean, I.
Yeah. You asked for two different forms of relief. We're proceeding on a special permit.
Special permit, okay, yeah.
And then you're going to ask, will you agree to withdraw your request for a, a variance?
I do.
Okay, without prejudice. All right. So Mr. I, Igo said aye. Ms. Homer?
Aye.
Mr. Frapri?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. DeYoung's an aye. That carries 5-0 in favor. What happens, sir, is I'll draft the decision. It goes to the town clerk's office. It gets filed with the town clerk's office. It has to be on file for 20 days before it's considered to be granted. What if that 20 days elapses without an appeal? You then take that down to the registry of deeds. You record it and you return proof of recordation back to our wonderful board decision. It's okay?
Yep. Thank you very much. I'll promise I will not build a canopy with a solid panel in the garage.
Yeah. Good luck.
Oh, yeah. That's good. So on that, request to withdraw that without prejudice. Mr. Igo?
Aye.
Ms. Homer?
Aye.
Mr. Frapri? Mr. Martin? Mr. DeYoung is an aye. That carries unanimously. Thank you, sir. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much, all.
Good luck.
And anybody prepared to make a motion to adjourn?
Did we have to, did we get to elections before?
I don't care if you elect me or you elect the moon twice, frankly, but I'm not seeing it on this agenda.
Oh, okay, that's true. Yeah.
I don't see it on the next one. So it has to be an agenda item before we can.
Right.
It's been on every other agenda and we haven't gotten to it. Right here tonight.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, so somebody moved to adjourn. We sit there for adjourn, right?
Good night, everybody.